Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for joining us for today's Senate session, the sixth special session, Friday, June twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-three, and it's exactly two fifteen in the afternoon. Before we proceed with the business for this afternoon, if I may please just ask everyone to stand for a moment of silence. Clerk, please take the roll.
Senator Babauta.
Presente.
Senator Cruz. Madam President.
Here.
Senator Hoffschneider. Senator King Neighbors. Senator Magovnia.
Gaige.
Senator Manglonya Donald. Senator Manglonya Paul. Senator Mandiola.
Here.
Madam President, we have six members present and three members absent.
Thank you, Clerk. Pursuant to our Senate rule, we need about five members to be present for us to conduct business. We have sufficient number to conduct our business this afternoon. Let the record reflect that the Senators Manglonya Donald, Manglonya Paul, and also Senator Carl Neighbors is hereby excused from this afternoon's session. At this moment, we're going to move into item B of today's agenda for public comment. It's now open for anyone that wish to make a public comment on any of the items on this afternoon's session. Please state your name and the entity you are representing, and also if you have a hard copy or electronic copy, we would like to get a copy of your comments this afternoon. Thank you. And you are given five minutes. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam President and members of the Senate. My name is Tiffany Christostamo. I'm representing CHCC as the Chief of Business Operations. I am here as Acting CEO on behalf of CEO Esther Munya, who is currently off island on official business. We at CHCC appreciates the opportunity to make comments on Senate Bill twenty-three thirty-seven authored by Senators Jude Hoffschneider, Carl King Neighbors, and Karina Magovnia. CHCC commends the authors and this committee for making the effort to help CHCC address one of its most challenging financial issues, our utility bills. We at CHCC are in full support of Senate Bill twenty-three thirty-seven. The intent of this bill is like the one extended to PSS with its utility rates by this same legislative body. PSS is in the business of educating our children, our future leaders, and CHCC is in the business of keeping them healthy, along with their teachers, their parents, their grandparents, and the entire CNMI community. This help can only come from you, the legislators. CHCC is in full agreement with the findings stated in the bill. Switching the rates from government to commercial will greatly help the only public hospital in the CNMI, the Rota and Tinian Health Centers too. The switch over in rates will greatly help the CHCC in its struggles and challenges as CHCC attempts to improve the delivery of healthcare services for the residents of the Commonwealth. Senate Bill twenty-three thirty-seven also correctly stated that CHCC be treated as other commercial healthcare providers in the CNMI. Therefore, it is only fair that CHCC pay the commercial rates for power, water, and wastewater. CHCC also supports the waiver provision in the bill of late fees or penalties that have been assessed against the corporation from fiscal year two thousand and eleven to present. Last but certainly not least, we at CHCC extends its appreciation to Senator Jude Hoffschneider, the main sponsor of the Senate Bill twenty-three thirty-seven, the co-sponsors Karina Magovnia and Carl King Neighbors, and the rest of the senators here today. Thank you for the opportunity to appear before this honorable committee, Madam President and members of the Senate today. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your comment. We are still open for public comments. Please state your name for the record and the entity you are representing, and you have five minutes. And if you have any hard copy or electronic copy, to go ahead and please provide this body for our records. Thank you. You may proceed.
Good afternoon, Madam President and esteemed members of the Senate. Thank you so much for hearing public comments today. My name is Caitlin Nissis-Mokanu. I'm the Chief Strategy Officer for the Commonwealth Healthcare Corporation. I've been working for the CHCC for nearly ten years, and in that time, the high cost of utilities has come up regularly as a major barrier for us operationally. A few years ago, we began to realize it is the huge disparity in utility rates that has given rise to our problems in this area. Senate Bill twenty-three thirty-seven would redress a significant financial imbalance that has long impeded us at the CHCC. I apologize in advance for the density of the remainder of my comments. I wanted to make sure that they're all on the record. Thank you. The CHCC operates within a unique paradigm. As a public corporation, it is entrusted with providing vital health services to your constituents across the CNMI while also operating within a business framework. Although we aim to generate value rather than profit, managing operational costs effectively and maintaining a stable revenue stream is essential for our success. No margin, no mission, as the saying goes. Central to this conversation about operating costs is the flawed utility customer classification methodology to which we are currently subject. By dividing customers according to our organizational characteristics, commercial, residential, nonprofit, or government, rather than similar usage characteristics, it undermines industry standards observed across the U.S. Government entities are not only unduly categorized into a separate customer class but are also subjected to disproportionately high rates. The charges levied on CHCC for electricity, water, and wastewater for services far exceed those for other large commercial entities, which is highly unjust. As a government customer, CHCC pays one hundred and ten percent more per kilowatt hour for electricity than other large commercial customers. When it comes to water, the disparity is a staggering nine hundred and eighty-seven percent higher compared to large commercial entities. And for wastewater, the discrepancy in the rates reaches a mind-boggling two thousand one hundred and seventy-three percent per one thousand gallons compared to other high-consuming commercial customers. Assessing a much higher rate to the government class of customers is a redistribution mechanism that presumably leverages public funds to subsidize all other utility customers regardless of ability to pay or circumstance. Ostensibly, the subsidy reduces utility rates for taxpayers whose contributions fund the government. The government then turns around with its revenues and struggles to meet the financial demands of the higher government rate, understandably reluctant to raise taxes on the very ratepayers it is trying to subsidize. However, as an independent public entity, the CHCC does not receive a significant proportion of its financing from CNMI public funds. Absent the Health Network Program, which is statutorily intended to be entirely public-funded, well under five percent of the CHCC's total financial resources come from the local government each year. This methodology of utility rate-making is deeply flawed and out of step with accepted practices across the United States. It's time this balance is rectified. By charging the CHCC at the commercial rate as proposed in Senate Bill twenty-three thirty-seven, we'll not only relieve this critical public health institution of its unfair financial burden but also ensure that we can focus on our primary mission, which is maximizing the public welfare. The CHCC deserves to be treated as any other healthcare provider within the CNMI when it comes to utility rates, not penalized for our status as a public-purpose corporation. Senate Bill twenty-three thirty-seven promotes fairness, respects the purpose of the CHCC, and ensures the sustainability of healthcare services for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. We're still open for public comments for this afternoon. Anybody else? Please state your name and the entity you are representing and provide us copies of your oral comments or hard copies. Thank you. You may proceed.
Good afternoon, Madam President, and to this esteemed body of the Senate and to the viewing public. For the record, I am here in my capacity as Representative Pizenti Castro Camacho and as a concerned citizen. I am here to support House Bill twenty-three dash fifteen, House Substitute One, and House Bill twenty-three dash eleven. I will start with House Bill twenty-three dash fifteen. The purpose of House Bill twenty-three dash fifteen is to amend Title VI of the Commonwealth Code by adding a new chapter to enact provisions associated with public corruption, other unlawful influences, and related offenses for public officials and other purposes. I would like to share a brief history of House Bill twenty-three dash fifteen. During my tenure in the Twenty-Second Legislature, I introduced this bill in the form of House Bill twenty-two dash one oh four to the full body of the House, and it was referred to the House Committee on Judicial and Governmental Operations for Disposition. House Bill twenty-two dash one oh four was passed by the House in December two thousand and twenty-two. Subsequently, this proposed legislation was transmitted to the Senate. Although it was transmitted to the Senate, no action was taken due to the transition of the legislature going into the twenty-third. After the transition in the Twenty-Third Legislature, I again introduced what is now House Bill twenty-three dash fifteen, House Substitute One, on February two thousand and twenty-three to the full body of the House, and it was again referred to the Committee on Judicial and Governmental Operations for Disposition. On March two thousand and twenty-three, during our regular House session, it was placed on calendar for adoption and then passed by the House. Then subsequently again, this proposed legislation was transmitted to the Senate. The intent of House Bill twenty-three dash fifteen, an anti-corruption bill, is to deter and prevent acts of corruption within the government and the private sector at all levels. What prompted House Bill twenty-three dash fifteen? The Twenty-Second Legislature took the lead in combating corruption led by then-Representative Selena Babauta, now Senator Babauta, Chairwoman of the Judicial and Governmental Operations, or JGO. During the JGO oversight into the Torres Administration, acts of corruptions were uncovered. The JGO oversight during the Twenty-Second Legislature was the driver to the enactment of this very important legislation. Let this bill be a reminder of the hard work that we have put into fighting corruption in the past two years within our government and the private sector. Thanks to the help of our federal partners, corrupt acts are coming into light, but it is a shame that good people have been influenced and intimidated to such extent as lawlessness. Just recently, the Office of the Attorney General, the Department of Public Safety, and the Office of Public Auditor has agreed to put together a task force to address acts of corruption within our government. This bill, when signed into law, would deter acts of corruption. To the viewing public, let this be a reminder to continue to protect our government by reporting acts of corruption such as fraud, waste, and abuse on our resources and the abuse of power against government employees and the people. It is time for our government to do good on self-governance and instill pride back to our humble people. I and the House of Representatives fully support the passage of House Bill twenty-three dash fifteen, House Substitute One. And may I continue on to the next one, House Bill twenty-three dash eleven?
You may proceed.
I and the full body of the House of Representatives support House Bill twenty-three dash eleven, a bill for an act to amend Title I, Division VIII of the Commonwealth Code by establishing a Veterans' Preference Employment Provision for the CNMI government. The CNMI is home to veterans who have honorably served our country. These remarkably unselfish individuals honorably answered to the nation's call with selfless dedication and have gone to great lengths to defend the rights and the freedoms that we enjoy today. The heroic men and women, along with their families, have endured the hardships that come with military service, such as serving in the time of war. As a token of our immeasurable gratitude, it is highly appropriate for the CNMI government to provide employment preference and opportunities to these very deserving veterans and their immediate dependents. It is particularly incumbent on the government to assist veterans with service-connected, permanent, or total disabilities and to exercise such permissive preference when appropriate. No words or action can ever equate to the appreciation and gratitude they rightfully deserve. Thank you for your time, and God bless.
Thank you, Representative Camacho, for your public comments. If we may get a copy of your public statement for our records, thank you. You can present it to the Sergeant-at-Arms. We are still open for public comments. Anybody else that would like to make a comment on the agenda items this afternoon? Go ahead and please state your name, the office you are representing, and also provide us a copy of your public comment. You may proceed. You have five minutes. Thank you.
Mr. President. Dispensar finanlasa. Esti parabio saangan pa vi huzga gi titanusu. Da dispensazu tuangan o oni recording losenembadgo. Sedizu por favor no sa talzat no kopia ututuli pagunani. Buenas tardes, no, Madam President. Parahogu. I member estina kuipun guma isaniluna guma senador mona ventitres. In onu si Oscar Embabauta. Ukuentata di administration como special assistant for administration. Madam President, no sedizu nu pune menos si sika minutos gi segun gi finasenmo dan itina gomo. Pagunani gi ni na session no yemessation. Ma kirendi ma tan momi gatu gi ni gi denmizu order of business. Particularly, this is the item number D, number one, the messages from the governor. Anegua simikafkashon dan gua siniala gi ni estina kuipun guma. Ni parata override i gubennu no. Isanila no line item bido gi. The revised budget, uh, twenty-three, public law twenty-three dash zero four under House Bill twenty-three dash thirty-one. Madam President, jan i members todo. Talzadinida. Ni constitution gi Commonwealth. Mani nan nenzu derezu dan naturidat. Segun ya tiklu dos, sectiona seti numero. Uh, numero C gi constitution. Gaige nona putet gi zamzun. Talzadinida tingko kontrae nona provisioni constitution. Sa derezu non manaiña. Ila satura pareho sa papanaguma dan saniluna guma. Talzat no motuzu kunumidi, respetu, dan sinceru na mensohi. Para bi adingani mzu gi kada na manera. Bi faesin amzu talumbai dan referiam zugu katani gubennu. Anei apunu pati gi win appropriation bill. Ni mai numeret papa i linea rumbido. Ikatonya gi abrit ventisinko, dosmit ventitres. Dos na pati ni mai indikagi ni gi pain override. In section six oh four gi provision, dan in section seven thirteen gi provision. In sentuwa este i minilago ilisatura. Losenembadgo. I gubennu loki alimanhula gi neru dian webi. Pareho dan hamzun i member senador. Manmanhula hit parata protehi, parata defendi. I palabas ni matugi papa gi constitution. Galumezuna manhulata. Tafunyudezu zagitkada dia namamachotuit. Ta tetendi da tiufalingu gi donintitota gi oni. Danasiguru na puta protete todo ru. I intirasezuna pahina parata protehi suru donu marionas. Estina pahina ni, uh, na, na, na sectioni habitu. Esti gi ikatonya gubennu ya keke defendi dan protehi. Ihafa gi nagagao di Department of Finance. Yandro oriku ten, section eight. Ni departmenton financea sina. Sumesteni dan mai inkotga pareho ni fondun fengkas marionas. Ni solamente ni gubennu osino oficina ni wes. Talzadiretzonya pro entalu gi ni. Gi kini bruto na manera. Ikeke sangan no Madam President. Donkluna respetu yemessation. Ananai todo ramas gubennu gi ginagagao gi constitution. Eni gi na motivo no tomap, pa vi tomapadeset amzun na taluani. Por favor, malata considera. Ihafa na decision pensegui, do fa faesin amzun. Kunumidi dan respetu. Dan inafamulik dan guinaiza. Ta vanmatatsun papa da ta sadba hafa differentiatea yemessation, justicia, dan loki ilisatura todo ru. Eno fa faesin amzun no Madam President dan i member sia. Gi mina dos, Madam President, dan siniala notutu atalu. Pa bi onoyau. Dan todo ru i member estina kuipun guma. Advansa nasidus masi ni todo du sta finatotsu mizo. Distike ne molemstina yemessationi patanakavalis. Imanautonya ni pro setbi publico moona gi ni gi tanota marionas. Especial nasidus masi para onimo na churuman na Senator Selena Roberto Babauta dan i member sia, Senator Dennis Mandiola, Senator Paul Manglonya, dan Senator Donald Manglonya. Ni tomapadeset pro managua junta. Dan ini kunguk para esisana na individual ni pinun, na puntani gubennu. Para si au diri moone programa kat kuip programa. Gi ni galumi Commonwealth, ininbrora sa saipan tinian lutada dan isankatan na isla. Sidus masi todo ru yano munmizo, finatotsu mizo dan yemessation tumalefaloki ni no dai nafamulik. Gi todo ru tempo pas dan feliz para todo samzun. Gi ni hami yemessation. Governor Palacios, Lieutenant Governor Apetang, dan todo ru emplea yemessation. Buenos dias parahogu, Madam President, dan i member talu. Sidus masi.
Sidus masi, Mr. Babauta. We are still open for public comments? Anybody? Thank you. Please state your name and the entity you are representing, and do provide us a copy of your public statement this afternoon. You may proceed, and you have five minutes. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam President. Technology sometimes. I should know it as a youngster, but sometimes it gets me. Good afternoon, Madam President, esteemed senators. My name is Jonathan Robert Glass, Jr. I'm the Chief Solicitor of the CNMI. I am here on behalf of the Office of the Attorney General, the Attorney General, and Chief Prosecutor Chester Hines. We are here today to support two bills. The first one is the Standing Committee Report twenty-three dash twenty-seven, which is House Bill twenty-three seventeen, which is the contraband bill. The Office of the Attorney General supports this bill as it is written. And we also want to thank Rep. Flores and the JGO and the House members for passing this important piece of legislation. And we'd ask that you also today pass this important piece of legislation. The reason why this bill is timely and needed is because currently, under CNMI law, we have no way to prosecute offenses for when people carry things into the jail that should not be there. We rely entirely on the feds to do that. You may recall about, I think it was about six months ago now, there was some contraband brought into DOC, and that individual was prosecuted by the federal government in the federal courthouse. And that was because we did not have a CNMI law to be able to prosecute that person. Recently, in the newspaper, there was an individual who had a cellphone in the prison, which would be another piece of contraband when you're in prison because people use cellphones to make drug deals. They use cellphones to communicate for other things to happen outside. They can actually be a very dangerous thing within a jail. And that individual had that cellphone, was taking photos, and posting them on Facebook, and that made it into our news. And again, something that the prosecutors here in the CNMI had no way to prosecute because we don't have a law for contraband in the jails. This will fix that. In fact, we are one of the only jurisdictions that do not have a law for prison contraband. This legislation will fix that. So we'd ask that you pass this legislation today in its current form. And we have offered written comments. They should already be in your packets of things and should already be part of the record and the communication over from the House, so you can certainly get those there. The second bill we'd like to support is House Bill twenty-three fifteen. The Office of the Attorney General obviously supports this bill and its fight against corruption. As you are probably all very aware, we are in a battle against corruption, and our office is trying to lead the charge. And that is one of the reasons why we established this new task force to fight corruption. And so we would offer our support for this bill, and we hope that you would also pass House Bill twenty-three fifteen. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Glass, for your comment. Anybody else? We are still open for public comment this afternoon? Okay, we are officially closing this section of our agenda under public comments. Moving on to item C, under reading and approval of the Journal, I now recognize the floor leader.
Thank you, Madam President. Members, we have Senate Journal number twenty-three dash oh seven, emergency session dated April fourth, uh, April nineteen ninety, two thousand and twenty-three, on our agenda for adoption and approval, and I move for its adoption.
Is there any second? There is a motion to adopt Senate Journal number twenty-three zero seven for emergency session for nineteen twenty-three, and it has been seconded. Any discussions from the members? Ready? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nays? Senate Journal twenty-three zero seven is officially adopted by this body. And if there's no objection by the members, I'd like to move down to item M of the agenda under reports of standing committees so that we could dispose of our nominees this afternoon and other matters for confirmation. Any objection from the members? None? Okay. Item M, reports of standing committees, I now recognize the floor leader.
Thank you, Madam President. Under, uh, letter M, reports of standing committee, we have seven reports. First one, Standing Committee Report number twenty-three dash twenty-seven from the Committee on EAGI, reporting on the executive appointment of Ms. Elizabeth Emma C. Itibus to serve as a member of the CNMI Scholarship Board of Directors representing the third senatorial district. I move for its adoption.
Okay, there is a motion to adopt Standing Committee Report number, just for correction on the record, twenty-three dash twenty-five, and it also has been seconded. Any discussions from the members? I recognize Senator Selena Babauta.
Thank you, Madam President. As to Committee Report twenty-three dash twenty-five, reporting on the nomination of Dr. Elizabeth Emma Cabrera Itibus. Dr. Itibus was nominated on April tenth, two thousand and twenty-three, and her credentials were examined and evaluated in a committee meeting held on June thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, which allowed the EAGI Committee for a close examination of the appointee's education, professional experience, and her views on public policy. Dr. Itibus is a CNMI daughter educated in Hawaii at the Hawaii Pacific University, where she obtained her undergraduate degree in biology and the South University School Pharmacy in Savannah, Georgia, where she obtained her advanced degree as a doctor of pharmacy. She is also a licensed professional in, under the CNMI Board of Professional Licensing and is in good standing. The EAGI Committee shares the administration's confidence in Dr. Itibus's professional and academic experiences, and the Committee recommends the adoption of Committee Report twenty-three twenty-five to confirm Dr. Emma, Elizabeth Emma Cabrera Itibus to serve as a member of the CNMI Scholarship Board. I yield, Madam President. I yield, Madam President.
Thank you, Senator Babauta. Any other comments from the members? Ready for the vote? Clerk, please take the roll.
Senator Babauta?
Yes.
Senator Cruz? Senator Hoff Schneider?
I'm good.
Senator Magofnia?
Yes.
Senator Mendola?
Yes.
Madam President?
Yes.
Madam President, all six members present voted yes.
With all six voting, uh, members voting yes for the, um, Standing Committee Report number twenty-three twenty-five. Is hereby adopted by the Senate body and also confirms Dr. Elizabeth Emma C. Itubus to serve as a member of the CNMI Scholarship Board of Directors, representing the third senatorial district. Recognize floor leader.
Thank you, Madam President. Next, we have Standing Committee Report number twenty-three dash twenty-six from the Committee on EAGI. Reporting on the executive appointment of Ms. Monique Boyer Soblon to serve as a member of the CNMI Scholarship Board of Directors, representing the third senatorial district. Uh, I move for its adoption.
There is a motion to adopt Standing Committee Report number twenty-three dash twenty-six, and it has been seconded. Any comments from the members? Recognize Senator Selena Babauta.
Thank you, Madam President. As to Committee Report twenty-three twenty-six. Reporting on the nomination of Ms. Monique Boyer Soblon to serve as a board member of the CNMI Scholarship Board. Ms. Soblon was also nominated on April tenth and her qualifications, experience, and education, as well as her professional conduct was scrutinized in a committee meeting simultaneously conducted with Dr. Emma Itubus on June thirteenth, twenty twenty-three. And the EAGI Committee has no doubts that Ms. Soblon will serve our CNMI students with uniformity and thus consents to the adoption of Committee Report twenty-three twenty-six, confirming Ms. Monique Soblon to serve as a member of the CNMI Scholarship Board as well. I yield, Madam President.
Thank you, Senator Babauta. Any other comments from the members? Are we ready for the vote? Uh, recognize Senator Jute Hoff Schneider.
Thank you, Madam Pres- and I wanted to, um, just in one breath, uh, both express my support to both nominees to this important, uh, body, um, dating back since it became a, a, um, autonomous agency. And I want to just go on record, Madam Press, to, um, request, respectfully request to the two would-be, uh, um, board members to continue their support on the programs, building capacity here for medical field as well as the behavioral health, uh, um, professionals here in the CNMI. Namely, the Professional Student Exchange Program Legislation, um, Law that right now is, uh, um, servicing some of our, our residents here or aspiring to be medical doctors in, or medical, uh, professionals in the med- in the field of medicine of, 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 at least ten different, uh, areas, correct? I see the certifying officers here and she's nodding her head. And the other, uh, law that's recently created, uh, and thanks for the support of the administrator and the boards. Um, the Behavioral Health Scholarship, uh, that's near and dear because as we see nationwide and it's already hitting home, uh, as far as, uh, behavioral health, uh, concerns here in our community. And Madam Press and members and for the viewing public, uh, I just ran into a, uh, an aspiring vice principal last night, uh, over, uh, a short dinner and that's one of the topic that he was discussing extensively as far as the, our students, uh, uh, that, uh, young generation that are up and coming, be future leaders of the CNMI. So I'm in part, the, the new board and, and the program itself to, uh, keep building that capacity that we need here to service our community. Last but not the least, I would be remiss if I don't, uh, also mention the late Rose Pangilinan Kamotzu, former, um, administrator of the CNMI Scholarship for her contribution over the years. And also directly working with my office and other members of the legislature to ensure that, uh, the two legislative, uh, process went through and became, uh, a document right now that, uh, our students are, are benefiting from. So, uh, to the other members of the legislature, current and past, I wish to also thank you for your continued support with the scholarship office. With that, Madam President, I yield back.
Thank you, Senator Hoff Schneider. Any other comments from the members? Are we ready for the call? Clerk, please call the roll.
Senator Babauta?
I'm good.
Senator Cruz? Senator Hoff Schneider?
I'm good.
Senator Magofnia?
Yes.
Senator Mendola?
Yes.
Madam President?
Yes.
Madam President, all six members present voting yes.
With all six members voting yes for the adoption of Standing Committee Report number twenty-three dash twenty-six is hereby adopted by the Senate body and also confirms Ms. Monique Boyer Soblon to serve as a member of the CNMI Scholarship Board of Directors, representing the third senatorial district. Congratulations and a short recess so that we can congratulate the nominees. We are back from recess. And we're gonna continue on under item M to finish up on the, uh, Standing Committee Reports. I now recognize the floor leader.
Thank you, Madam President. Moving on to the next committee report, we have Committee Report number twenty-three dash twenty-seven from the Committee on JGL. Reporting on House Bill twenty-three dash seventeen SHS one to establish the crime of promoting prison contraband and appropriate punishment and for other purposes. Uh, the Committee recommends passage in its current form. I move. Move for its adoption.
There is a motion to adopt Standing Committee Report number twenty-three dash twenty-seven.
Second.
Any second?
Second.
Okay, discussions from the members? None? Clerk, uh, please call the roll. Thank you.
Senator Babauta?
Yes.
Senator Cruz? Senator Hoff Schneider?
I'm good.
Senator Magofnia?
Yes.
Senator Mendola?
Yes.
Madam President?
Yes.
Madam President, all six members present voting yes.
With all six members voting yes to adopt Standing Committee Report number twenty-three twenty-seven is hereby adopted by the Senate body. Recognize floor leader.
Thank you, Madam President. Next, we have Standing Committee Report number twenty-three dash twenty-eight from the Committee on JJGL. Reporting on Senate Legislative Initiative number twenty-three dash one to propose a constitutional amendment to Article eleven, section six of the NMI, um, Constitution. The Committee recommends passage in its form of Senate Draft One, and I move for its adoption.
Second.
There is a motion to adopt Standing Committee Report number twenty-three dash twenty-eight and has been seconded. Any comments from the members? None? Clerk, please call the roll.
Senator Babauta?
Yes.
Senator Cruz? Senator Hoff Schneider?
I'm good.
Senator Magofnia?
Yes.
Senator Mendola?
Yes.
Madam President?
Yes.
Madam President, all six members voting yes.
All six members voting yes, Standing Committee Report number twenty-three twenty-eight is hereby adopted by the Senate body. Recognize floor leader.
Thank you, Madam President. Next, we have Standing Committee Report number twenty-three twenty-nine from the Committee on JGL. Reporting on Senate Bill twenty-three dash nineteen to amend one CMC subsection twenty-eight oh three, uh, letter C to remove the payment of land compensation judgment by Department of DPL. The Committee recommends passage in its current form and I move for its adoption.
Second.
There is a motion to adopt Standing Committee Report number twenty-three dash twenty-nine and has been seconded. Any comments from the members? None? Clerk, please call the roll.
Senator Babauta?
Yes.
Senator Cruz? Senator Hoff Schneider? Senator Magofnia?
Yes.
Senator Mendola?
Yes.
Madam President?
Yes.
Madam President, all six members present voting yes.
With all six members voting yes, Standing Committee Report number twenty-three dash twenty-nine is hereby adopted by the Senate body. Recognize floor leader.
Thank you, Madam President. Next, we have Standing Committee Report number twenty-three dash thirty from the Committee on JGL. Reporting on Senate Bill twenty-three dash thirty-two to establish mandatory presentation of the valid personal photo identification for any debit card or credit card transaction made in person and in, and any check, cash exchange, or purchase for all business establishments in the Commonwealth. Uh, the Committee recommends the report to be filed. I move for its adoption.
There is a motion to, um, recommend for Standing Committee Report number twenty-three to be adopted and for the bill to be filed. Any second?
Second.
Any discussions from the members? Recognize Senator Cruz?
Madam President, is, uh, is this, uh, Standing Committee Report number?
Twenty-three dash thirty?
Thirty. Uh, I just wanna inquire from the Committee, uh, as to the findings, uh. I understand in the report that the, the two, uh, I think that the, the debit and the MasterCard that they have policy on that does not require, uh, establishment to present ID. Is the, uh, do you know behind the policy as to why they don't require? No, because this, I believe this is the third time that I introduced this legislation and, uh, because of, not because I want to introduce legislation like this, but there's a complaint from the public that they are, they've been victimized by, uh, by, uh, individuals that using their credit card or debit card at a store. And then the establishment never ask any ID identification to match the person that is, uh, purchasing on that particular. And, uh, that's the, the reason why. And I understand banking institution will not support it because it's business. Of course, if, if they, if they require that, uh, they're gonna lose business because, uh, the, uh, the establishment has to ask at all times. And, and banking institution will not make money if there is a, a, uh, a law such like, such as this, uh, legislation that I, that I've been introducing for the, this, I believe this is the third time. And I want to know if the, if the Committee do a research on those two policy that, that are stated in this report.
Thank you, Madam President. May I?
Recognize Senator Selena Babauta.
Thank you. Um, the JGL conducted its, uh, this, its formal, um, committee meeting to debate and markup and deliberate on this bill. And you're right, I looked into the legislative history of this bill. It's been introduced since the twentieth, uh, legislature by yourself. Um, I'm sorry, twenty-first, twenty-first, twenty-second, and now twenty-third, uh, and you were the author for all three terms, uh, to introduce this. Based on our research, and we did research, um, Visa and MasterCard expressly prohibit a merchant to require an identification card as a condition of using their debit card or credit card. Financial institutions have an agreement with Visa and MasterCard in order to put their logo on, on the cards. And there is also regulations between the bank and Visa and MasterCard in place for zero liability. All the customer has to do is contest it with their bank. And Visa and MasterCard will honor, um, there is an exception to that rule. Uh, based on our research, there is an exception to the rule of mandating an ID card as a condition to use a debit or a credit card, and that is only if the merchant suspects fraud. So it's not, uh, totally prohibitive for the merchant to ask for an ID card when someone presents a, uh, debit card or a credit card or a check. It's not prohibited. They can certainly ask for it if they suspect fraud. So as to the example you gave as somebody complaining that their debit card or credit card was used fraudulently, um, the merchant could have asked him, and perhaps maybe the merchant, uh, it must have been that the merchant did not request for an ID card. But there are exceptions to that rule, um, from Visa and MasterCard. But they expressly prohibit a merchant from mandating a customer to produce an ID card to, as a condition to use that.
Recognize, uh, Senator Cruz.
Thank you. So, so is that, i- if in the event that we pass this legislation, is that in violation of that rule? Because for me, Madam President, my members of, uh, the Senate, this is very unjust and unfair for, for, uh, innocent people that are out there that have been victimized by, uh, by a responsible individual because even if you go to the bank, they will not give an information if it's your spouse to ask information as to how much they have in that account. Or even, e- even if you say this is your account, they will ask you an ID to verify that this is your account. So why not having this at any establishment to verify whether this card belongs to you or not? Rather than if you present a debit card to establishment or a credit card, they will just accept it without any verification. And that's the purpose of this legislation is, is to protect those innocent victims that are being victimized with debit card and/or credit card. So, uh, if, if legislation, I don't, I want to ask that question whether, if we pass legislation like this, is in violation of, uh, of any law in regards to, uh, debit card and credit card, uh, agreement or policy?
Madam Press?
Recognize counsel.
I, I know that the counsel for the committee that addressed the bill, I think I signed this bill, I think three times too, when you introduced it. And I don't know what's the discussion, but if it's based on a policy by those credit card companies, I would say that the legislation will not violate that policy if it becomes law. Uh, you know, hierarchy of laws, the constitution, treaties, constitutions, laws are in that. Uh, and policies are below statutes, so I don't think it would violate the policies of those, um, companies. I know there is a policy that if somebody uses your credit card or your debit card and it's somebody used it, you didn't use it, you can make a claim to the bank and you get reimbursed. The problem with those things, it, it's, uh, take, it's timely, it takes time. There's delays in getting reimbursed. But with the bill in place, uh, or a law in place, uh, it will prevent that from happening. I remember being surprised at one time, like maybe last year. I was at McDonald's and they asked me, I was gonna use my card and the, the cashier asked for my ID and I said, whoa, first time. I'm glad you asked. And she responded that they, the reason they started asking was children were taking their parents' cards and they were going to McDonald's and using it. But that was the only time. And in the entire years that I have credit cards, that was the first time they asked me for my, for an ID. So, uh- So, uh, I think if we pass the law, I don't think it would violate the policy 'cause it's not a federal law, it's just a policy of the credit card companies. Um, they may perhaps, I know this is for filing, if it might consider to table the matter and look into it more, or this is the third time this thing is going through and I think it, all three bills were signed by me.
Thank you, counsel. I now recognize Senator Dennis Mandiola.
Thank you, Madam Press. Um, I'd just like to also, uh, on top of the Chairwoman's, uh, elaboration on her dismay, or the Committee's dismay, I also wanted to point out that part of the reason, or part of the reason why we, we as a Committee, we all agree is really for us to go back to the bill and kinda clear some, uh, language and verbiage according to, uh, we solicited, um, comments from the Attorney General's office and as well, the Attorney General was, um, also gave opinion that some of the language was kind of vague, so we need to just probably go back and just narrow it down and try and define it a little more. Likewise, the Saipan Chamber of Commerce, um, gave their opinion on this matter. So for me, um, the reason why we kinda just pushed this matter to try, uh, to be filed is probably table it and go back and review it and just try and fix some of the language and maybe we can discuss it at a later matter, or later date. Thank you, Madam Chair, I yield for now.
Thank you, Senator Mandiola. A short recess, please. We are back from recess. And, um, I would now recognize the floor leader to withdraw her motion for item number six under this particular section of the agenda. Recognize floor leader.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to make a motion to withdraw the adoption of, um, standing committee report number twenty-three dash thirty and refer Senate Bill twenty-three dash thirty-two back to JGL Committee for further review. So move.
There is a motion to withdraw, uh, to not adopt standing committee report number twenty-three dash thirty today and to refer back Senate Bill number twenty-three dash thirty-two to the JGL Committee. Do I hear a second? Clerk, please call the roll.
Senator Babauta?
Yes.
Senator Cruz?
Yes.
Senator Hofschneider? Senator Magovnia?
Yes.
Senator Mandiola?
Yes.
Madam President?
Yes.
Madam President, all six members present voting yes.
With all six members voting yes, to refer back Senate Bill number twenty-three dash thirty-two to the JGL Committee and to also not adopt standing committee report number twenty-three dash thirty today. Thank you. Recognize floor leader.
Thank you, Madam President. Last, we have standing committee report number twenty-three dash thirty-one from the Committee on EAGI, reporting on the addendum to standing committee report number twenty-three dash twenty-two adopted on May sixteen, twenty, twenty-three, and I move for its adoption.
There is a motion to adopt standing committee report number twenty-three dash thirty-one. Do I hear a second? Any discussions from the members? Recognize Senator Babauta.
Thank you, Madam President. As to standing committee report number twenty-three thirty-one, I just wanted to state for the record that the reason why we did this, the addendum to, uh, an earlier committee report when we heard the, and examined the nomination of Ms. Satcheco Gerard. Uh, and the reason why we're doing this addendum to that report, um, is because her expiration, her term will expire in less than one month. And rather than, um, conducting a whole new hearing with all the documentation required and repeating the whole motion, well, it was, uh, with the advice and consultation of our, our Senate counsel to go this route to just, uh, prepare an addendum to the original, um, committee report. And that is why we're, uh, and I ask for your support to do this. Otherwise, the EAGI Committee and also the administration would have to re-nominate and go through the whole motion again, um, for the same nominee, same board. And it's just, uh, redundant to do so. So I ask for everybody's, uh, support to adopt this, um, committee report. I yield.
Thank you, Senator Babauta. Any other comments from the members? Ready? Clerk, please call the roll.
Senator Babauta?
Yes.
Senator Cruz?
Yes.
Senator Hofschneider? Senator Magovnia?
Yes.
Senator Mandiola? Madam President?
Yes.
Madam President, all six members voting yes.
With all six members voting yes, standing committee report number twenty-three dash thirty-one is hereby adopted by the Senate body. Thank you. And members, if there's no objection, um, I would like to move this session down to item P under bill calendar in the interest of time for some of the people that are still waiting in the Senate chamber regarding some of our actions this afternoon. Any objection, members?
No objection.
None? Okay. We shall proceed and I'll recognize the floor leader.
Thank you, Madam President. Under bill calendar, we have Senate Bill number twenty-three dash thirteen to strengthen and the mandate of the Commonwealth of the Northern Mariana Islands Archives as, at the Northern Mariana's College. Madam President, I move for its passage.
There is a motion for the passage of Senate Bill number twenty-three dash thirteen and it has been seconded. Clerk, please call the roll.
Senator Babauta?
Yes.
Senator Cruz?
Yes.
Senator Hofschneider? Senator Magovnia?
Yes.
Senator Mandiola?
Yes.
Madam President?
Yes.
Madam President, all six members voting yes.
With all six members voting yes, Senate Bill number twenty-three dash thirteen hereby passes the Senate. Thank you. Um, recognize floor leader.
Thank you, Madam President. Next, we have Senate Bill twenty-three dash nineteen to amend, to amend one CMC subsection twenty-three, twenty-eight oh three, letter C, to remove the payment of land compensation judgments by the Department of Public Land. Madam President, I move for its passage.
There is a motion to pass Senate Bill number twenty-three dash nineteen and it has been seconded. Any comments from the members? None? Clerk, please call the roll.
Senator Babauta?
Yes.
Senator Cruz?
Yes.
Senator Hofschneider? Senator Magovnia?
Yes.
Senator Mandiola?
Yes.
Madam President?
Yes.
Madam President, all six members voting yes.
With all six members voting yes, Senate Bill number twenty-three dash nineteen hereby passes the Senate. Recognize floor leader.
Thank you, Madam President. Next, we have Senate Bill twenty-three dash thirty-seven to mandate the Commonwealth Utilities Corporation to change the power, water, and wastewater rate for the Commonwealth Healthcare Corporation to commercial rate and for other purposes. Madam President, I move for its passage.
There is a motion to pass Senate Bill number twenty-three dash thirty-seven in a form of S, S D one. It has been seconded. I now recognize Senator Jude Hofschneider for comments.
As is most, Madam President, members, and good afternoon to everyone here. Uh, just to, uh, clarify the couple of things, Madam President, this is still in, uh, Senate Bill twenty-three thirty-seven, uh, format. I will however be formally introducing a, an amendment to it. Also, I wanted to just clarify, uh, and I appreciate the two gentle ladies for, um, presenting their comments with regards to this bill, but I do wanna, uh, correct the citation. The authors are, uh, myself, Senator Donald M. Manglonya and floor leader Corina E. Magovnia. Uh, moving further, Madam President, and I now would like to offer a, uh, amendment to twenty-three thirty-seven and which, uh, I think the members of the, the members are furnished copies and the amendment is included in the, to further elaborate the, the, uh, the purpose and finding section of the legislation as requested, uh, accordingly. So with that, I so move.
Thank you, Senator Hofschneider. Do I hear a second on the offering of those amendments to Senate Bill number twenty-three dash thirty-seven? It has been seconded. Any further discussions from the members? Recognize Senator Babauta.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, I would like to res- respectfully request that this bill be tabled or referred back to committee. Um, in the EAGI hearing that we conducted for Mr. James Syrock and Dr. Angelo, Dr. Jack Angelo, who were nominated by Governor Palacios to the PUC Board, the Public Utilities Corporation Board, the board responsible for establishing the rates of, um, utilities, including telecommunications. It was conducted on June sixteen, two thousand and three. A question from that hearing directly related to, to what this bill proposes was posed on both nominees. And Mr. Syrock, an attorney, uh, by profession, um, cautioned the legislature from introducing such legislation because it would put the onus on the other two classes of, of ratepayers, namely households and the commercial, um, ratepayers. And that would be unfair to them to subsidize the, uh, CHCC. And I'm not trying to neglect the needs or abandon the needs of CHCC, but as Ms. Caitlin earlier testified, um, CUC regulations are flawed. Um, I think there, we can agree on some of those, uh, comments. But regulations can be fixed with regulation. It is not fixed by legislation. Um, in the new, near future, and I understand that the committee reports for, for the confirmation of Mr. Syrock and Dr. Angelo are already, um, being formalized to fi- to finalize them. And I believe with the confirmation in the near future of these two experts in the field of utilities, um, we should afford them every opportunity to do their own research and make the proper determination as to what the, the rate adjustments should look like today, um, rather than rush to judgment and pass this bill without even affording them. The PUC will be, um, at a quorum once we confirm Doc-, uh, Dr. Angelo and, um, Mr. Syrock. So I ask that this bill be, um, taken off the bill calendar and referred back to the P U T C Committee because to pass this bill today would be inattentive to the needs and the suffering of households and commercial ratepayers. Um, with that, uh, Madam President, I yield.
Thank you, Senator Babauta. Any other comments? I recognize Senator Jude Hofschneider.
Thank you, uh, Madam President, and I, uh, thank you, uh, Chair Babauta. Uh, naturally, uh, that is a very valid, uh, points, uh, made. Um, obviously, I wasn't able to listen to, uh, the two gentlemen that were going through the Committee. However, as we, this is not the first time that we introduced this, uh, legislation and for every day that we wait is every day that the agency is going to risk being knocked on their doors again with, uh, as just right, what just happened, um, a couple of months ago. Thankfully, we were able to avert that, uh, scenario. Um, and, uh, we, here we are today, uh, deliberating on the legislation that is before us. Uh, in addition, Madam Press, um, it'd be, it's, it's an injustice also for us here to continue neglecting the obvious, uh, situation currently being faced by the agency when in fact, you know, we are unable to properly furnish them the, the, uh, the needed funds to, to address the, the operations and their obligations such as the utilities and just recently Medicare for all. So the, the issues will not go away as far as CHCC. And I get that, uh, the PUC will be, the Commission on Rates, uh, will be tasked to oversee this, but are we gonna wait for months again, uh, to continue the deliberation on what rates, uh, uh, the CHCC should be paying? Or should we put this to rest? And when the Commission is in order, they can revisit this with the very agencies that are asking for assistance from this body? And lastly, Madam President, um, as in any case, no, uh, this is nothing new. When this thing is booked since two thousand and eleven, it doesn't look good on their financial portfolio in any agency. Doesn't look good, and eighty-five million or fifty-eight million dollars hanging there, even if like what you always, uh, reiterate, Madam President, that, you know, uh, we encourage agencies, especially, uh, corporate, corporations to get into some sort of a, uh, financing, uh, um, fi- fi- financial, uh, portfolio whereby they generate income to some degree, uh, you know, whether it's dividends or what have you. And in order for them to, to even qualify or even explore, explore that, they need to clean up their, their, uh, their books. And, uh, there's no way that they're gonna be able to pay the fifty-eight million dollars that is before them. And if this is, uh, the- And if this is, uh, the vehicle that would assist them, one of them, uh, then I respectfully ask that we forego the Madam Chair's, uh, requests and dispose of this legislation and, and, and until we, we, uh, we confirm the two gentlemen for PUC, then they can engage with, with CHCC as to what the next steps is would be. But at the same time, uh, you know, at least CHC can now move to the next phase of, of their quests to, to be considered to be on a commercial rate, uh, payer. This is my say.
Thank you, Senator Hoffschneider. Any further comments from the members? Recognize Senator Babalta.
Thank you, Madam President, and this is my say, Senator Hoffschneider. Um, I respect your comments on that, but, um, you, you alluded to, um, you know, should we wait for months, uh, before we can fix the utility issue between CHCC and CUC? Um, I think there should be no rush to judgment again there to, to, um, you know, regulate it by legislation. CHCC has waited for years to pay for their utilities. I think, um, we don't have to wait for months. The two nominees will be confirmed, um, by hopefully the end of this month, in a matter of days, if not weeks, not months. Um, and in fact, that is the very reason why, and I will reiterate this again, it is so unfair to continue to put this onus on households. And you may enjoy paying a higher LEAC rate, but I don't. And that is the reason why the LEAC rate for households are so high is because we are subsidizing the CHCC. There are other remedies, um, that is being worked on to alleviate their suffering, CHCC. Um, but it, again, it is so unfair to put this onus that, that households who are suffering right now because of high utility rates have to subsidize the power, uh, utility, um, bills for CHCC. So again, if CHCC can wait for years to pay for their utility bills, we can wait a few days, a week or so to confirm the two gentlemen, Dr. Angelo and Mr. Cyrock, so they can properly, um, do their research and due diligence into what is the appropriate rate. Who knows? It may go down. It's been a long time since the CUC rates have been, um, adjusted because there has been no PUC, but now that the administration is moving forward to address that, I think we can wait a few weeks or if not weeks, then days, um, till we confirm the two gentlemen, and I yield at this time.
Thank you, Senator Babalta. Any further comments from the members? None? A short recess, please. Senators, can we meet in my question? We were talking about the proposed amendments to Senate Bill Number Twenty-three dash thirty-seven. Clerk, please call the roll on the amendments.
Senator Babalta?
Yes.
Senator Cruz?
Yes.
Senator Hoffschneider?
Good.
Senator Magovnia?
Yes.
Senator Mandiola?
Yes.
Madam President?
Yes.
Madam President, all six members voting yes.
With all six members voting yes for the proposed amendments under Senate Bill Number Twenty-three dash thirty-seven is hereby accepted by this body. And now we are back to the main motion. I recognize the floor leader.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, we are back to, I, we now have Senate Bill Twenty-three dash thirty-seven, S-D one, um, and I move for its passage.
Good.
There is a motion to pass Senate Bill Number Twenty-three dash thirty-seven in the form of S-D one and it has been seconded. Any further discussions from the members? None? Clerk, please call the roll.
Senator Babalta?
Madam President and members of the Senate, with the forefront of households and, um, the suffering of households and other ratepayers in the forefront of my mind and heart, I cannot vote yes on this bill and I will vote no.
Senator Cruz?
Yes.
Senator Hoffschneider?
Good.
Senator Magovnia?
Yes.
Senator Mandiola?
Yes.
Madam President?
Before I cast my vote, I'd like to make a comment that this particular legislation, Senate Bill Number Twenty-three dash thirty-seven in the form of S-D one, when it passes the Senate today, it will be transmitted down to the House for further deliberation. Therefore, for the record, nobody's rate changes. Everything that stands on the rate of CUCs is still applicable to either your residential customer or commercial customer or government entity. And therefore, um, my, my vote for the passage of SB, SB Twenty-three dash thirty-seven in the form of S-D one is a yes. And hereby passes the Senate. Thank you. Recognize floor leader.
Thank you, Madam President. Next, we have Senate Bill Twenty-three dash thirty-nine to repeal and reenact one CMC subsection seven four oh seven to provide for a uniform, reasonable, and fair travel policy within and outside the Commonwealth of the Northern Mariana Islands, repeal two CMC subsection four four three three, letter U, and for other purposes. Madam President, I move for its adoption.
Second.
There is a motion to pass Senate Bill Number Twenty-three dash thirty-nine and it has been seconded. Any comments from the members? Recognize Senator Jude Hoffschneider.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, members. Thank to everyone that's here. Um, this legislation is, uh, uh, recycled legislation, um, from twenty-second. I, I do wanna mention that, uh, it was a product that is, uh, worked along with the Office of Public Auditor, um, uh, from not just, uh, last legislature, but even previous legislature to that. So, uh, there's a lot of substantive changes to the, the current, uh, um, travel policy before us, uh, that, that we deploy nowadays, uh, and this would address some of the concerns, um, as enumerated in the bill and would also provide a, uh, a uniform, uh, policy amongst all the, uh, agencies throughout the CNMI, if not all the agencies throughout the CNMI, um, within the, the, uh, regarding the travel policies. This is my say, Madam President, I yield.
Thank you, Senator Hoffschneider. Any further comments from the members? None? Clerk, please call the roll.
Senator Babalta?
Yes.
Senator Cruz?
Yes.
Senator Hoffschneider?
Good.
Senator Magovnia?
Yes.
Senator Mandiola?
Yes.
Madam President?
Yes.
Madam President, all six members voting yes.
With all six members voting yes, Senate Bill Number Twenty-three dash thirty-nine hereby passes the Senate. Recognize floor leader.
Thank you, Madam President. Next, we have House Bill Twenty-three dash eleven to amend Title One, Division Eight of the Commonwealth Code by establishing a veterans' preference employment provision for the CNMI government and for other purposes. Madam President, I move for its passage.
Second.
There is a motion to pass House Bill Number Twenty-three dash eleven. It has been seconded. Any comments from the members?
Ready?
Ready? Clerk, please call the roll.
Senator Babalta?
Yes.
Senator Cruz?
Yes.
Senator Hoffschneider?
Yes.
Senator Magovnia?
Yes.
Senator Mandiola?
Yes.
Madam President?
Yes.
Madam President, all six members voting yes.
All six members voting yes. House Bill Number Twenty-three dash eleven hereby passes the Senate. Recognize floor leader.
Thank you, Madam President. Next, we have House Bill Twenty-three dash fifteen, HS one, to addre- address public corruption by expanding and clarifying the offense of official misconduct and establishing felony and misdemeanor punishments and for other purposes. Madam President, I move for its passage.
Good.
There is a motion to pass House Bill Number Twenty-three dash fifteen in the form of HS one and it has been seconded. Any comments from the members? None? Clerk, please call the roll.
Senator Babalta?
Yes.
Senator Cruz?
Yes.
Senator Hoffschneider?
Good.
Senator Magovnia?
Yes.
Senator Mandiola?
Yes.
Madam President?
Yes.
Madam President, all six members voting yes.
All six members voting yes. House Bill Number Twenty-three dash fifteen in the form of HS one hereby passes the Senate. Recognize floor leader.
Thank you, Madam President. Next, we have House Bill Twenty-three dash seventeen, HS one, to establish the crime of promoting prison contraband and appropriate punishment and for other purposes. Madam President, I move for its, uh, its passage.
Second.
There is a motion to pass House Bill Number Twenty-three dash seventeen in the form of HS one. It has been seconded. Any comments from the members? Clerk, please call the roll.
Senator Babalta?
Yes.
Senator Cruz?
Yes.
Senator Hoffschneider?
Good.
Senator Magovnia?
Yes.
Senator Mandiola?
Yes.
Madam President?
Yes.
Madam President, all six members voting yes.
House Bill Number Twenty-three dash seventeen in the form of HS one with all six members voting yes hereby passes the Senate. Recognize floor leader.
Thank you, Madam President. Lastly, we have Senate Legislative Initiative Twenty-three dash oh one, S-D one, to propose a constitutional amendment to Article eleven, Section Six of the NMI Constitution. Madam President, I move for its passage.
There is a motion to pass Senate Legislative Initiative Number Twenty-three dash zero one in the form of S-D one and it has been seconded. Any comments from the members? Clerk, please call the roll.
Senator Babalta?
Yes.
Senator Cruz? Senator Hoffschneider?
Good.
Senator Magovnia?
Yes.
Senator Mandiola?
Yes.
Madam President?
Yes.
Madam President, all six members voting yes.
With all six members voting yes, Senate Legislative Initiative Number Twenty-three dash zero one in the form of S-D one hereby passes the Senate. Members, um, if there's no, um, objection, since we are down at the end towards the agenda, uh, I'd like to dispose of, um, item Q of the agenda. Is there any objection? None? Okay. Clerk? Petitions, memorials, and miscellaneous communications.
Madam President, we have miscellaneous communications Twenty-three dash thirty-seven through Twenty-three dash forty-eight.
Any comments from the members? None? Thank you. Uh, members, we're gonna go back on the agenda and move on to item, um, if there's no objection, item E, under communications from judiciary, there's none. I'm gonna move on. Um, senators, no objection. Under item F, communications from the heads of executive departments. Any comments from the members? Clerk? None? Members? Okay. Under item G, communications from the House. Clerk?
Madam President, we have House Communication Twenty-three dash twenty-eight through Twenty-three dash thirty.
Any comments from the members? None? Item H, communications from the Senate. Clerk?
Madam President, we have Senate Communication Numbers Twenty-three dash one fifty-seven through Twenty-three dash one eighty-three.
Any comments from the members? None? Item I, communications from the Washington Delegate, there's none. Unfinished business, there's none. Under prefiled bills, initiatives, local bills, and resolutions, I would now like to recognize the authors of the legislation. And I'd like to begin with, um, Senator, either Hoffschneider or Senator Cruz. I recognize Senator Hoffschneider.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, members, um, prefiling, uh, Senate Commemorative Resolution, uh, Twenty-three oh one and to honor and commend Lieutenant Freddie U. Hoffschneider III, the III, for his unyielding sacrifice for the CNMI and the entire United States of America as a member of the United States Coast Guard and commanding officer of the USCG, US Coast Guard Cutter Oliver Henry.
Thank you, Senator Hoffschneider. And I shall recognize now Senator Corina Magovnia for item five.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to, uh, introduce Senate Resolution Number Twenty-three oh eight to recognize and congratulate all the illustrious competitors of the Thirty-seventh Attorney General's Cup's speech competition for their outstanding and remarkable speeches and presentations. Um, thank you, Madam, Madam President.
Thank you, Senator Magovnia, and I shall recognize myself, um, Senate Resolution Twenty-three dash zero five, to acknowledge and commend Marcelino B. Augen for his principled contributions to the betterment of the community of the Commonwealth of the Northern Mariana Islands. Also, Senate Resolution Number Twenty-three dash zero six, to honor and recognize Abner Fernando Venus for his principled contributions to the betterment of the community of the Commonwealth of the Northern Mariana Islands. Under Senate Resolution Number Twenty-three dash zero seven, to commemorate the distinguished life of the late Sergeant Ivan Patrick Munya Igito and to recognize his honorable service in the United States Armed Forces and to the Commonwealth of the Northern Mariana Islands and its people. And lastly, under Senate Bill Number Twenty-three dash forty, to mandate CUC to promulgate human resources regulations pursuant to the Administrative Procedure Act and for other purposes. And members, if there's no objection, um, I'd like to move down to our resolution calendar for passage. Any objection from the members? I recognize Senator Babalta.
Um, thank you, Madam President. Did we skip L? Are we skipping L or do we?
My apologies. Yes, introduction of bills, initiatives, local bills, and resolutions, item L. Anything from the members? None? Okay. We're moving down to our resolution calendar. I now recognize the floor leader.
Thank you, Madam President. We have resolutions calendar for action. First is our Senate Commemorative Resolution Twenty-three oh one, um, to honor and commend Lieutenant Freddie U. Hoffschneider for his unyielding sacrifices for the CNMI and the entire United States of America as a member of the United States Coast Guard and commanding officer of the USGC Oliver Henry. Members, I move for its adoption.
Second.
There is a motion to adopt Senate Commemorative Resolution Number Twenty-three dash zero one. It has been seconded. Clerk, please call the roll.
Senator Babalta?
Yes.
Senator Cruz?
Yes.
Senator Hoffschneider?
Good.
Senator Magovnia?
Yes.
Senator Mandiola?
Yes.
Madam President?
Yes.
Madam President, all six members voting yes.
With all six members voting yes, Senate Commemorative Resolution Number Twenty-three dash zero one is hereby adopted by the Senate. Recognize floor leader.
Thank you, Madam President. Next, we have Senate Resolution Twenty-three oh five, to acknowledge and commend Marcelino B. Augen for his principled contributions to the betterment of the community of the Commonwealth of the Northern Mariana Islands. Members, I move for its adoption.
There's a motion to adopt Senate Resolution Number Twenty-three dash zero five. It, it has been seconded. Voice vote? All those in favor say aye. Nays? Senate Resolution Number Twenty-three dash zero five hereby, uh, adopted by the Senate. Recognize floor leader.
Thank you, Madam President. Next, we have Senate Resolution Twenty-three oh six, to honor and recognize Abner Fernando Venus for his principled contributions to the betterment of the community of the Commonwealth of the Northern Mariana Islands. Members, I move for its pas-, uh, adoption.
Second.
There's a motion to adopt Senate Resolution Number Twenty-three dash zero six and it has been seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nays? Senate Resolution Number Twenty-three dash zero six is hereby adopted by the Senate. Floor leader.
Thank you, Madam President. Next, we have Senate Resolution Twenty-three oh seven, to commemorate and distinguished, the distinguished life of the late Sergeant Ivan Patrick Munya Igito and to recognize his honorable service in the United States Armed Forces and to the Commonwealth of the Northern Mariana Islands and its people. Members, I move for its adoption.
There's a motion to adopt Senate Resolution Number Twenty-three dash zero seven and it has been seconded. All those in favor say aye. Nays? Senate Resolution Number Twenty-three oh seven hereby adopted. Floor leader.
Thank you, Madam President. Lastly, we have Senate Resolution Number Twenty-three oh eight, um, to recognize and congratulate all the illustrious competitors of the Thirty-seventh Attorney General's Cup's speech competition for their outstanding and remarkable speeches and presentations. Members, I move for its pa-, uh, adoption.
There's a motion to adopt Senate Resolution Number Twenty-three dash zero eight. It has been seconded. All those in favor say aye. Nays? Senate Resolution Number Twenty-three dash zero eight is hereby adopted by the Senate. Members, we now move back to, um, other remaining items on the agenda and then we're back to item D right now under messages from the governor, and I wanna recognize the clerk.
Madam President, we have Governor's Message number twenty-three dash seventy-eight through Governor's Message number twenty-three dash one-one-two.
Thank you, clerk. If there are no other comments from the members, I would like to recognize the floor leader to make the proper motion on one of the items off the agenda on that particular section.
Thank you, Madam President. On Governor Message twenty-three dash seventy-eight dated for April twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-three, I move to override Section six oh-four and seven thirteen. So move.
There's a motion to, under Governor's Message number twenty-three dash seventy-eight, to override the vetoes on Section six oh-four and seven one-three of Public Law number twenty-three dash zero-four. It has been seconded. Discussions from the members. I recognize Senator Babata.
Thank you, Madam President. And I would like to respectfully request or move that the motion to override be withdrawn. With respect to your concerns about Section six oh-four, House Bill twenty-three oh-nine, House Substitute One, which has already passed the House, addresses that directly by requiring it, requiring the administration to report any non-local, meaning all federal, funding that arrives, you know, on our shores to be reported to the legislature. And as I mentioned, that House Bill is already on its way, I think, to the Senate. Now, with respect to your concerns about Section seven one-three, access provided to the legislature, there is also currently a local, I mean, a House Bill twenty-three dash zero forty-nine which addresses that specifically. And my concern with the override is that it is a band-aid solution. It only, you know, the authority to, when we, if, if it passes, if the override passes, it only brings us up to the end of this fiscal year. But if we pass the two House bills, it will permanently require and address your concerns with respect to the two particular sections of the amended budget bill that was line item vetoed by Governor Arnold Palacios. So I move to, I make, I'm offering a secondary motion to withdraw the override, the original motion.
Thank you, Senator Babata. Any other comments from the member on the secondary motion? Voice call. Clerk, please call the roll on the secondary motion. Are you still commenting?
No.
Madam President, point of clarification?
Short recess, please. We're back from a short recess, and I would now recognize Senator Selena Babata to restate her motion.
Thank you, Madam President. I offer a motion to withdraw the main motion to override the Governor's line item veto.
Is there any second from the members? Since there is no second, that motion is defeated. We're gonna go back to the main motion that was offered by the floor leader to override Section six oh-four and seven one-three of Public Law number twenty-three just zero-four. Any discussions on the members?
Madam President, are we back to the main question?
Yes.
Uh...
Recognize Senator Jew?
Thank you. Just so I get my bearings in order. Earlier this month, there was a conference committee gave rise by virtue of an impasse of the modi-modi-modified budget, no, for twenty-twenty twenty-twenty-three. And perhaps, unfortunately, the chair is not here. But if we can be, just to clarify one more time, as the Secretary of Finance had made a public statement as far as whether or not there is a AARPA funds left. And then only to learn as disclosed by the Secretary of Finance herself, saying there is some. It kinda created a question moving forward, but nevertheless, we went ahead and and blessed the requests from the House on House Bill twenty-three thirty-one, HS one, which is essentially became Public Law twenty-three oh-four. And we all voted for for the product, including the question before us. Now, as we fast forward to today, I just wanted to ask maybe the fiscal analyst. Dave is here to see if he can guide me and the rest of us in here as to really where we're at with this funding status. Madam Press, you we've spoken over the last few days on the issue before you, before us in the CNMI. And I get it. Cost containment is, uh, is was deployed by the administration to lessen the the financial dilemma we're in in the CNMI. And that's, and that's the reason why they ceased to continue some public agency employees' contracts employment. The infamous airline contract, the, and so forth. Again, I wanna be as consistent as possible with my position, Madam President, and I also want it, but before I even do that, I wanna further understand the action that we are about to take into, that we are considering today by allowing the Mr. Dave Demipont to articulate some of the documents that we have before us or before some. If that's okay with the members. I know it's pushing four o'clock, but, four-thirty, but you know, this is critical undertaking, and we need to, to some questions. I'm just requesting, Madam President. I'm only one out of the six that are in here. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Hoffschneider. Any other further comments from the members before I decide what to do with the request? At this point, recognize Senator Cruz? Oh, you're not gonna make a comment? Okay. All right. There's no objections from the members. I would like to call our fiscal analyst, Mr. David Demipont, to just give us a a brief summary of the inquiry from Senator Hoffschneider before we move forward with the item on the agenda. Thank you.
Good evening, honorable members, Madam Chair. I believe that this stage of the financial condition of the CNMI government is very prudent and critical to really have a good, a good, a good feeling of the figures that we have to to see so that we can have confidence on the numbers, so this body can have, or can make a better decision-making in any financial matters, especially under these financial circumstances that we are in. We're deeply in financial trouble. I would like to echo the recommendation by our Senator Hoffschneider to come before you and give you a snapshot, a true picture of exactly why the intent of that Section six oh-four and seven one-three was included in that Public Law twenty-three dash zero-four. It has nothing to do to take away the big responsibility of the Secretary of Finance, and I understand also the rep from the Governor's Office, Mr. Oscar Babata, citing the responsibility and the power of the Secretary of Finance under the Constitution. That's not the intent there. The intent there is basically to give us an able picture of the financial status of the CNMI by looking into the financial system. In this case, for example, the munis system. You know, a financial system basically will give you a financial reporting on a timely basis. It kind of captures the true picture of the financial spectrum of a transaction. In this case, for example, we're talking about ARPA funds. ARPA, I believe, the money is actually were transmitted in FY twenty-twenty-one. And the money would have been already reported and recorded under the system at that time. Maybe munis were, I mean, the JD Edwards was in place, and then munis came later. So there is a transition period there between these two systems. So the intent of this law is to give us an able as to see whether the numbers are there, the transactions were properly reported, and then reports can be easily generated and give us the fund status of ARPA by the specific four sections. Six oh-two, six oh-three, six oh-four, which is the Chapter Projects Fund. Six oh-three relates to Local Fiscal Recovery Fund. Then six oh-two relates to State Fiscal Recovery Fund. Those items are approximately over half a billion of funds that we're talking about. And as of today, Senator Hoffschneider stated that we cannot see a true picture of what's the ARPA funds, ARPA fund balance today. We don't know what it is. But there is a system in there that can give us that, that balance, and that's the purpose of a fund balance, a fund system balance. So, Madam Chair, that's my testimony for this afternoon. Thank you.
Thank you, David, for your snapshot of the system and your particular financial guidance before this body with respect to the item on the agenda on the override of Section six oh-four and seven one-three. Any other comments from the members? None? Before we take a vote, I would like to go on record to regarding my sentiments of why the override is very essential. And let's begin with Section six oh-four regarding the veto, which was Senate Public Law twenty-three dash zero-four was signed into law by the Governor dated April twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-three. On Section six oh-four, on the revised CNMI ARPA spending plan, it talks about notwithstanding any law to the contrary prior to the submission of a revised CNMI ARPA spending plan of the ARPA funds to the Secretary of the US Department of Treasury. The revised spending plan must be approved by the CNMI Legislature by joint resolution after collaboratively consulting with the administration to ensure that the critical needs of the Commonwealth are addressed. That is a particular line item veto on Public Law number twenty-three dash zero-four. If we may recall, House Bill twenty-two just dash thirty-three in the prior legislature, there was a big push to have this legislature participate in the ARPA funds expenditures. It went up to the Senate, and it did not go through. So we entered the new legislature, and that is the reason why the spirit and intent of transparency and working together between the bodies of this Commonwealth separation of branch of government, the legislature, the executive branch, and judicial, is the very purpose why we inserted that particular language, the administrative provision for the passage, to ensure that there is a balance with respect to the ARPA spending. As a matter of fact, in this very body, the now Secretary of Finance did make a statement publicly that a revised spending plan for ARPA was supposed to be submitted end of March two thousand twenty-three to the US Treasury. To date, we have not seen any revised spending plan, though we know that there's some activities happening with the ARPA funds currently as we speak. But we have yet to receive any formal notice to the legislature whether such revised spending plan is to be submitted to the US Treasury, and if not, to tell us so officially and in writing, so that we know exactly what's happening with the monies. On the other section for override, seven one-three, we go into, again, Public Law number twenty-three dash zero-four, and that particular section is access provided to the legislature. Notwithstanding any provision of law to the contrary, current read-only, in quote, read-only access shall be provided to the Speaker of the House and the Senate President of the CNMI Legislature and their designee, the fiscal analyst for budgetary purposes at a level equal to that of the CNMI Office of Management and Budget, provided that set access shall also be available consistent with the following. And I will not go into reading the entire document, but this particular public law was signed on April twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-three. And in the spirit of transparency and accountability, knowing that there's no access to munis and JD Edwards, and to make sure that we look into the financials of the government because of the financial crisis that we are facing, I executed a request dated January thirteenth, twenty-twenty-three to the Secretary of Finance acting then, at that time. Requesting specifically in order for the CNMI Legislature to effectively and efficiently perform its work pertaining to the CNMI government's financial status, it is necessary that the fiscal analysts of the legislature be permitted to access the munis. As you may be aware, the fiscal analysts were given access to the former JD system. This authorization was critical to the analysts in providing the necessary and most appropriate guidance to the legislative members. For the foregoing reason, I am requesting your office to authorize the legislative fiscal analyst to access the munis. And on this particular request dated back on January thirteenth, twenty-twenty-three, Public Law twenty-three zero-four was passed on April twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-three, and munis was vetoed. ARPA was vetoed, but this request was dated back since January thirteenth, twenty-twenty-three, and to validate the request, a response came back from finance from Ms. Lolita Lynn B. Duñez addressing Kina, who works for the Secretary of Finance Office, to please reach out to the Senate President's Office and provide assistance on the attached request for munis access approved by the acting Secretary of Finance and kindly acknowledged receipt of this email. This was dated back in January thirteenth, twenty-twenty-three. We were given access, yet the veto, which passed April twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-three, took place. And so, it does not agree with what was approved and what was vetoed. Additionally, I do wanna talk about ARPA and the quarterly reports submitted to the legislature by the Secretary of Finance as mandated by Public Law twenty-twenty-two, as amended by Public Law twenty-three dash zero-four under Section two oh-three, which requires the Secretary of Finance to report the following on a quarterly basis to the presiding officers of the legislature. Comparison of actual revenue collected and revenues estimated. Comparison of actual expenditures and appropriated expenditures and transfers in and out funds. The purpose of the reporting requirements of Section two oh-three is to monitor the financial health of the government and provide reasonable assurances on transparency and accountability. We have spoken this since January twenty-twenty-three about rebuilding trust, transparency, and accountability. transparency and accountability to the people of this Commonwealth, and to be open, to open our books, to tell the people of the Commonwealth where we stand with our finances, local revenues, ARPA money, and all federal money that we receive in this Commonwealth. On the two quarterly reports submitted to the legislature by the Secretary of Finance, there is no narrative report submitted highlighting the performance of the budget on the revenue estimates against the actual collections, appropriated expenditures against actual expenditures and encumbrances, reservation of certain earmarked funds against actual earmarked expenditures, and reservation on certain debt service payments against actual payments. Thus, the results of the operations would have shown whether the CNMI government incurred a surplus or a deficit for the past six months in FY Twenty Twenty Three. The Secretary of Finance highlighted, report to the members of the legislature should include revenue trend on the revenue estimates of all the revenue bases. Identify those revenue bases that are overly projected and make immediate adjustments accordingly. Identify those activities that have overrun their budget and address them to the members of the legislature. Assess and determine the expected budget deficit before the end of the fiscal year. Evaluate and determine if there is an immediate need to establish a line of credit facility to combat the depleting working capital reserves, and to evaluate the financial condition or cash flows of the CNMI government for the next twelve and determine whether there is an immediate need for seeking financing for the operations of the CNMI government. And lastly, on ARPA funds. During the Conference Committee for the Modification of FY Twenty Three Budget, in the words of the Secretary of Finance on record, it appeared on the local papers that lawmakers confused that there is still some ARPA funds left. It is because the Secretary of Finance acting at that time did state on record that there is still ARPA funds. And no, we are not confused at all. As a matter of fact, when we first took office, a worksheet was provided as of December Thirty First, Twenty Twenty Two, on ARPA funds, Section A, B, C, and D, adding it over to the last column. Available ARPA SL FRF, sixty-five million, seven-hundred-eighty-nine-thousand, one-hundred-seventy-one dollars, point eighty-five cents. The latest report as of May Thirty First, Twenty Twenty Three, available ARPA SL FRF under the column total, ninety-three million, four-hundred-nineteen thousand, four-hundred-sixty-five, point sixty-two. These are the very documents coming from the Office of the Secretary of Finance. And for this reason, for the people of the Commonwealth, there's no other motive other than to be transparent, to be accountable to the people of the Commonwealth, to show the evidence of what we have in our books, to produce the evidence that has been provided to this very body. We have to be, we preach the words of transparency and accountability to rebuild trust for the people of the Commonwealth. Five hundred of them lost their jobs, but yet we show a positive number that there is still ARPA money. And let me include, my own office is fighting for the island of Tinian, who purchased a car for a program under DCCA. And my office is being asked to get, to, to get assistance for approval of payment because now the department on Tinian is being asked to surrender the car because there's no more ARPA money. When in fact, that the purchase order, which I spoke to the procurement officer of the CNMI government, I wrote an email to the Treasury of Secretary of Finance, and I argued the point. When we commit a purchase order, we validate and certify funding for commitment of obligation. And the program bought the car. They're using the pro- the car on Tinian, but yet they're being told there's no more ARPA money. Return the car. And so, Madam President, can you please help us? This car we are using, Madam President, is to go up to the airport at Tinian to pick up the food stamp coupons for the people of Tinian. This car was processed under ARPA. And therefore, transparency again, accountability, honesty, rebuilding trust for the people of this Commonwealth is the very reason why we are pushing for an override. And I end my comment on that. Any other comments from the members before we take a roll call? Clerk, please call the roll.
Senator Babauta?
No.
Senator Cruz?
Yes.
Senator Hofschneider?
Good.
Senator Magovnia?
Yes.
Senator Mandiola?
No.
Madam President?
Yes.
Madam President, four members voting yes, two members voting no, and three members absent.
With four members voting yes, two members voting no, three members absent, the motion to override Sections Six Oh Four and Seven One Three did not pass the Senate. Thank you, members. We shall move to our agenda to finish up this session this afternoon under Section R, Announcements. We have a session, members, coming up on June Thirty. Uh, we'll give you the time later on. Uh, I believe there's some confirmations that are coming up for the, uh, members of P O T C. Any other announcements from the members? I recognize Senator Jude Hofschneider.
Thank you, Madam President. I respectfully asking, uh, uh, consideration of the funeral of, uh, the mother of former Senator Venus Blanc is happening on the same day, on thirtieth, so there's not too much to ask. Madam President, if we can schedule the session in the afternoon?
Thank you for that, um, notification, Senator Jude Hofschneider. Well noted. Any other, um, comments or announcements from the members? None? Recognize floor leader for the adjournment of this session.
Thank you, Madam President. I offer a motion to adjourn this session subject to the call of the President.
There is a motion to adjourn this session this afternoon, and it has been seconded. All those in favor say aye. Nay? This session is hereby adjourned. Thank you, Senators.